All right, well, I would like to welcome everybody here to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, June 23rd. Please all rise from the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're selecting updates, only the key update if any of the community is watching. Obviously, we're in a heat wave, and please contact the senior center if you're having issues. We do operate that as a polling center, and the hours posted on the website. But just stay cool, and hopefully tomorrow's going to be pretty scorcher, and then it might be Saint Simole. Otherwise, no updates for today. Board members comments? Al?
I have several, so I will dominate the discussion. I'm going to extend the meeting. So first update was we did the North Madison Fire Company 100th Anniversary. And we read a proclamation, I read a proclamation from the Board of Selectmen to the host company, and it was very well received. So we had Senator Cohen, Representative Parker there, all of their friends and families. There was a bounce house, I didn't go in it, but it was a great event, and they had lots of great food there. And a band, they had a live band, so it was rocking out there a little bit. Thanks to all the service that Madison, North Madison Host Company provides us. Their dedication and volunteerism is incredible, so 100 years, wow, big deal. And then Madison Youth and Family Services, I have a couple of updates. First off, Neighbor to Neighbor, and I guess we've got something on our consent agenda here with great thanks to Neighbor to Neighbor and their continuing support of Madison Social Services. At the Consent Agenda includes their substantial donation, which is a big deal, $27,000. Important for Board of Selectmen to know that Neighbor to Neighbor is moving towards providing a biannual donation to support Madison Social Services Emergency Assistance Programs that include funding for emergency energy assistance, food insecurity, and housing. It is easier and more efficient for Neighbor to Neighbor to support social services in this way versus providing smaller monthly donations that they've been doing. So given our strong communication and their tremendous generosity, we were able to continue in partnership to support our community members. That's that. And then, secondly, for Madison Youth and Family Services, the resignation of Kathleen Depp's. The Consent Agenda also includes her resignation from the Board of Youth and Family Services, and they wanted to acknowledge and express their deepest gratitude to Kathleen for her 18 consecutive years of service and membership on the board, that includes several years on our executive board and four years as the chair. To say thank you to Kathleen, we would like to share publicly the words inscribed on a plaque given to Kathleen on her last board meeting in June. The inscription read, "With heartfelt appreciation to Kathleen Depp's for nearly two decades of leadership and dedication to the Madison Youth and Family Services Board and our mission. With a life devoted to others, you have shaped a legacy of compassion across all the lives you've touched."
Welcome.
Yeah, 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 a lot going on, so even in the summer, even when it's hot.
Great.
Right, Austin?
All right, well, thank you for that. If there's no other liaison reports or selectman comments, we'll go over to citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments? Please, Fran.
Hi, I'm Fran Brady, 108 Tennessee Lane. Since memorial trees are on the topic of the agenda tonight, I wanted to share some suggestions for my not-for-profit map for trees. Working with Charlie Corso at the American Legion, I proposed that we honor Madison 76, interesting number, 76 Gold Star Veterans with trees during the Madison America 250 celebrations next year. These veterans sacrificed their lives across seven conflicts, from the Revolution to the Operation Endured Freedom. I have three ideas for commemorating their sacrifices. First, it's a tough one, a memorial park. It's a formal park, like the Connecticut Trees of Honor Memorial in Middletown. If you've been up there, it's beautiful, but it's beyond our budget, I think. Second, another idea is tree-lined vistas. I've mentioned this to others, just as the town of Guilford is currently doing, let's restore historical downtown tree-lined vistas by planting shade and ornamental trees as appropriate in the gaps along Boston Post Road east of the library and along Wall Street. Now, the last idea, community memorial tree plot. But I would like to say, why not be unique and bold and create a tree plot of at least two acres on unused town property with dedicated areas for the Gold Star Memorials and an area for non-military memorial trees that are being discussed elsewhere. And this plot could also serve a third purpose, the official depository of future replacement trees that result from planning and zoning approved land development projects. The town can apply either voluntary or mandatory replacement guidelines when a certain minimum size specimen tree is cut down during planning and zoning, not private, planning and zoning specifically, approved construction projects. This could be accomplished without an official ordinance. It could be done through regulations, planning and zoning during their rewrite period right now. So for example, if a builder needs to remove a 48-inch diameter black walnut tree from behind former Elizabeth's Cafe, that builder could be asked to plant, or demanded, could be asked to plant X number of trees in our new community plot. Now, here's the last, tie it all together part. Possible locations include Bauer Park along the east side of Cope and Cox Road or one of the 29 two-acre or larger town-owned orphaned properties that were recently identified by the Ad-Hoc Facility Committee, like the Jeffrey School. So note that typical forest contains at least 150 trees. California, 600, but normally it's about 150 trees. I hope you can see that this last suggestion would accomplish multiple town goals with a single approach. Please let me know, if you think this is worth pursuing, because I'm spending a lot of time trying to develop these ideas. Thanks.
Any other citizens' comments? Hands raised online? Oh, yes.
I would just like that, that's permission to be able to speak at item 7, to identify some of the people who aren't able to be here for the Academy.
Hands online? With that, then we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to pursue or approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
So move. Second.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item number 7. And actually, this should be discussed to take action to approve proclamation honoring the volunteer services at the Ad-Hoc Academy Community Center Building Committee. Okay, great, so we prepared a proclamation, and I do invite Joe, if you want to come up and say words, but I think the point of this is that we know that there was a lot of service that your committee and each member gave over the last two and a half years. And one of the things you usually get to do after a building committee is formed is you get a plaque, right? Unfortunately, that didn't happen with this, although we're going to continue discussing the future of the Academy, and I encourage all you to stay involved in that. But I know that particularly this was a challenging committee because of a lot of public scrutiny and also a lot of different challenges with the building itself, right? And the budget and all that. So, and it was a lot of work. I mean, you meant biweekly, I think, and it was...
Bi-monthly.
Or, yeah.
Bi-weekly would have killed us.
Oh, no, twice a month, yeah. Every other month, or every other week. And I know that was a big burden on people's time and efforts, and then there was outside work, a lot of research, investigation, and everything else. I mean, and we know that everybody put their heart and soul into this project. And although we're disappointed it didn't move forward, that doesn't deter at all the service that you provided for the town. So we did want to give you this proclamation, which we'll vote on that, and then all in favor, say aye. So we have these individual proclamations for you as well as, and I know only some of your members are here, but, so you do not forget that there's some benefits sometimes of being in the use of, it's not a plaque, but we do some nice little caps for you as a consolation prize. Either both of the board members want to make any additional comments?
I just wanted to compliment the committee on its success. You did carry out the mission that we gave you, and you were able to design a project in light of all of the competing interests and all the things that tugged this committee in different directions. It's astonishing that you were able to actually come up with a project, a good design. It perhaps wasn't the right time for this in terms of the voters' belief, but I just wanted to compliment you on handling the myriad of difficult dynamics that were involved in designing, coming up with this design for this building. This is, I think, the most challenging building committee I've ever participated with all these years because of all the things they had to juggle, so my congratulations.
I mean, echo what Al just said. Heartfelt thank you to all of you that participated in this process. I know many aren't here, hopefully we'll get to watch this at some point and see all of our thank yous. You know, a hat, a proclamation is certainly not enough to represent all the hard work that you guys did for the town. And individually, you guys should feel proud of all the work that you did. I know it wasn't easy, I know it was tiring, I know we asked a lot of you, and then we asked more of you, then we asked more of you, and it was a challenge, but thank you very, very much. Your leadership was outstanding.
And hopefully that, you know, some of you will consider serving again. There's still a lot of ways to serve the town, this happened to be one of the more challenging ones, but there are others.
Spirely wants to be a selectman. Sign here now.
So I don't know if you would like to come up and get a proclamation. Do you want to say a few words, Joe, and then we can hand these out to the not-for-servants?
I'd like to say a few words from here, I guess. Not everybody could be here, but I just want to recognize the people who did this. And here are their names out loud, myself, Dave Spirely, who's here, and Ann Kelly and AJ Miller, Eileen Davis, who had to leave the committee, and Joe Paradiso, they're both emeritus, but they contributed a lot to the committee while they were here. And Joan Walker, of course, who isn't here, but was with us the entire time. Some of the replacements, John Lamorandi, he came from Bill Stapleford's committee, Peter Porton, architect, helped us a lot, and Fleesh Smith, who actually moved from the town, working for the town to coming to the committee, so I'd like to thank all of them. And of course, Jeannie, I don't know if we could have held ourselves together with Jeannie, and Jacqueline before Jeannie. Bill McMin and Peter Anderson from the town, who helped us a lot, and thank you yourself, and Al. Also, this is the unusual, and I'd like to thank all the people who came to the meetings and the hearings here. And, I mean, they helped form our thinking, they helped us identify problems. And in many ways, they said it couldn't be done, and, you know, they went right. But I would like to thank everyone who was involved in the process, because it was a process that involved more than just the people here. It was a process both the selectmen and from members of the town.
Right, thank you for that, and obviously there was other predecessor committees as well. So, as I always said, this is a community-driven project, right? And then the community has made its decision on, so. Well, with that, I'd be happy to give you this, and then, Joe, are you guys getting together? Or should I just have each of the other members who aren't here collect?
We're going to try to get together.
Don't see.
We're going to have a couple of beers.
Sorry, you go, by the way. So I twisted my ankle, so I'm a little problem right now. Walk as much with this.
I think we might try to get together Monday at 5:30.
Do you want to get?
Yes, congratulations. Let's see, we've got Anne back here. Congratulations.
Very important.
Thank you very much, Al. And who are you?
Of course, of course. Thank you, guys.
So we'll hold on to these, and then, or do you want to take them? Or I don't know, I don't know.
I'd like to take them, I'd like to give them.
I'm short a hat, I think.
We're short one hat.
Yeah.
Maybe Joan already has one.
Yeah, Jeannie, why don't you hold them, and then I'll know where to get them.
Yeah, I think I'm slightly rammed, I wasn't thinking, I was covered here today. But once again, thank you. And it's same age, police process, we move forward over the summer and the fall about ultimately what happens with the property. We want to hear from everybody, hear everybody's point of view, so it's important. And you guys know the ins and outs of that building very well. Nobody knows them. All right, thank you so much, and thanks for coming out. All right, so moving on, just discuss and take action to dissolve the Ad-Hoc Community Center Building Committee. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we do that kind of officially, that way we don't have to publish meeting notices, calendar, and like, because I know some people reached out, they're like, why is this on the calendar? And I was like, we've got to kind of formally dissolve it, so. Item number 5, approval proclamation honoring the North Madison Volunteer Fire Department on its 100th anniversary.
So move.
And once again, Scott read the proclamation, it was a great event, and we're once very grateful for their service. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So officially. Item number 10, discuss proposed beach and recreation department policy and memorial bench and tree donations. Okay, so a draft of this was in your packet, and Austin and I had talked about this about a month ago with, you know, a lot of the benches have aged, and we ended up replacing all of them with carbon, and a lot of those have plaques on it. And so Austin did his best efforts to replicate the plaques on the new benches that were installed, but it got us talking about, like, you know, people usually make a donation and they buy the bench, right? So how does this, does this go on for perpetuity, or do we put a timeframe on it? And we also approved ARPA funds for downtown, and those benches are now in, and they're going to be installed possibly sometime in July.
That's that one that we talked about, that, I think I told you about, that family was looking for.
Yeah, and so, you know, they all have life cycles, and we didn't really have an organized, you know, policy around this. Like, how long is it good for, and how do we get ahold of families? Sometimes these benches are like 25 years old, you know, how do you get ahold of an heir, or, you know, somebody? So Austin did some research and came up with, a lot of towns have a formal policy for this. And so this was the first cut, and I think to talk a little bit about what our vision would be for this, and, you know, how we would kind of manage this going forward. This way, people understand the expectations, because I don't, I think there's kind of a thought, like, you can't change a bench, you know, it's been there for 30 years or whatever, so we need to think through how we want to cover this going forward. And then it takes the heat off you when you have to make strategic decisions sometimes. I know we included, tree is in this, you and I talked more about benches, but trees is not.
I put trees in there, but I think this should come out and be a separate item, because trees, hopefully when you plant them, are lifelong trees. You know, typically when we do trees at Bauer Park Memorial Trees, those are guaranteed for a year through the purveyor that we get them from. But benches are, they have a legitimate lifespan that, they don't last forever. And now, you know, if we go forward with this policy, you know, people will be made aware of it when they want to purchase a memorial bench, and there'll be, you know, things that they'll be made aware of. I think it should work. We have 65 benches that I counted throughout town, a lot at Surf Club, the downtown area, here, Salt Meadow, East Wharf, JC, and the Dog Park at Salt Meadow as well. So there's a lot of benches, and in order for us to keep them, you know, looking fresh and nice, I think this policy is the right way to go.
So I think the first thing is, I feel like the tree donation could be one of the things on the agenda for the new tree commission when it gets formed. I know that process is going on down. So we'll talk maybe more about a tree policy different, and we'll kind of eliminate that from this policy, because this, you're right, this is a finite life, a different kind of thing. So, and, so I don't know, board members thoughts on what Austin proposed?
I have one word, Smith. Under approval and placement, the second bullet point. My suggestion is, in order to avoid future arguments, I think that sentence should be truncated. I think the sentence should read, "The town reserves the right to relocate or remove benches," period. I just think, I wouldn't want to get into a future argument with a donor about whether it is necessary due to safety, construction, or unforeseen circumstances.
Fair enough, yeah.
It's like 10 years, is that, that was kind of normal from what you had researched, right? Some were seven, some were ten.
Yeah, so I looked at, you know, policies in Connecticut and across the country, and 10 was about the average of when benches start needing to be replaced. You know, if you go more than that, they start looking like the ones we have downtown now. And you can replace the slats in them, but it won't be the same wear or patina, so it just, it do won't look right. So I think 10 years is about the right amount of time to get it on a replenishment schedule.
And how do you determine where, when we add, like, because I think you get requests, and people say, oh, I'd love to have a bench here, and I want to donate it, like, is that you're making that suit, or do you go to commission?
Yeah, so right now, really, the only place we can add benches is Salt Meadow. Surf Club is full, East Wharf, we're just getting closer to the water, so we're really pulling East Wharf now. The Dog Park or Salt Meadow along the ball field is really the only spots that we have left. So when people come to me, we, you know, we take a ride and we look at the locations, and if they deem them to be suitable for their memorial bench, that's where we go. But we're really, we're tight on spots anywhere else.
Any possibilities at Bauer Park?
We do do them at Bauer Park as well, a lot of the trees go there. But benches are an option there as well.
What about Rockland, anything up north? Feels like that would be interesting.
Yeah, it would be interesting, never hadn't thought of that, maybe they had the trailheads. Yeah, so you could probably do six.
Or even like, what's that, where they do the jumping?
Yeah.
Like, almost be able to.
79 trailhead, yeah.
Well, maybe you could talk to each of the committees for those parks, and maybe come up with, you know, if we had ideas for where we would use, the best locations would be, so you could like have a running list of.
One all the way up with the selectmen's?
Well, that little pond, it would be great to have a bench there, that pond, I forget the name of the pond.
Cone Pond.
No, 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 the one, as you get close to Squidhamas Stones, I forgot the name of it, it was beautiful.
Oh, that was nice, yeah, that was really nice.
There is a text back there, remember? Yeah, because we were putting.
You have to fire it, Bauer Park's going to have to carry that thing. That is rock.
Hey, I carried that stone.
They're heavy, the new ones are heavy.
Yeah, well, solid state, we're trying to buy things, and I know that's been some conversations too. I think that we want to standardize, and we want things that are going to be kind of commercial quality, because I know some of the athletic groups have wanted to add, like, benches, and I think we should stick to, you know, a certain standard and certain, like, life of the bench. You know, that's consistent.
The Madison Bench.
You can brand it.
And I know the ones downtown, you're going to be going through and replacing those, that was ARPA funds that we had. Is downtown pretty much tapped out too, you think?
Maybe swing a couple more down there.
Yeah, okay, so it might be like, you could put on the website, here are the areas, you know, yeah, and then you could kind of.
Are they all come on slats?
No, we're going to connect them right to the brick.
So like, if you put it in Rockland, would you put this down somewhere?
It would end up somewhere else.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Okay, well, I think that you got, we can maybe just vote on this the next time, maybe make a few amendments, take up the tree references, but I didn't see any other issues with this.
Where did the plaques go, like?
Right in the center of the top slab.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, like, if it's had to decommission a bench and replace it, do the plaques just go with the bench?
Yeah, so I would say, if we're going to, you know, move forward with this policy, if the family decided not to renew their 10-year bench, we could give them the plaque and replace the.
Because right now, we actually, we don't have a list, right, of the older donated benches, right?
Whatever's on the plaque.
Yeah, so now we'll have a record in the office, you know, a contact number, and then you make your best efforts and try to get ahold of the person.
Any ones we put in the last five years, we know of before that.
Yeah, okay.
Some of the ones downtown, you can't read the plaque anymore either.
And some of those weren't secure, right, if I recall? And that was part of the problem, people were moving around a lot, and, you know, so that became an issue. And I think now they're all going to be secure, correct? Yeah.
You feel like all the ones, like, where Ashley's is, like, in that, or two?
Yeah, some of the ones on Main Street, I know we had an issue with like one or two of them, that people were just picking up.
Yeah, there was a couple by the Life Ball.
Ah, you know, they want to sit in the shade. From a safety perspective, though, it makes sense to have them bolted down.
Yeah, they should be bolted down. Walk off of them, because they're pretty expensive.
What did each bench cost?
$1,800.
Yeah, oh, wow.
And they're not cheap.
Plus the plaque, plus we install them, so the cost is just low.
All right, so we'll, at our next meeting, just kind of, the policy, and I appreciate this.
It's great we're doing this, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing to get.
Less of the.
What do we do?
Yeah, well, and I think it's better that it sets people's expectations too, so they understand what they're purchasing.
I know you've been saying that to some people, right, you have to sort of set it up.
Yeah, so any of the ones that I've done in the last five years, I've taken over, we've made it clear that if any maintenance needs to be done besides, like, staining them or anything like that, you're responsible for, and no one has bought it at all.
Okay, great, so we'll move on to item number 11. Discuss and take action to approve releasing funds from a planning reserve in an amount not to exceed $75,000 to fund the Surf Club Master Plan project pending board grant.
So move.
Okay, so we actually got responses back. Austin, do you want to just spend one second on this one?
Absolutely, yeah, I was just getting some pressure.
But I just have a question, so we, a small working team with new ERPs, and we think the budget and the total cost probably will be close to, we don't want to spend this much, but maybe up to $150,000. So we already had money in CIP of about $75,000. So this would reserve planning funds matched with the CIP funds. We got some great responses from some people who are very experienced, have done this for a lot of other towns and stuff. So we'll be making a decision on that, and then that'll probably be our next meeting, we'll be voting on a word contract. We wanted to have some flexibility on the budget.
Are we going to leverage what Gary had done already, and we went through this before your time, but Al and I saw it. It was, he really did a nice job with sort of coming up with a model design and some ideas, and it'd be great to at least leverage that.
I think that was the building, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So, you know, we're looking for some fresh ideas and see what these vendors come forward with.
That was still like, no.
Yeah.
Then we would take and show them this plan, but I think right now we wanted to see kind of. And then we can kind of look at all that, and I think, you know, as we go through the process, that'll be certainly one of the documents that we will have, all the previous. And that's one of the reasons we're going to try to get the costs down, because there's been a lot of work done. And we have surveys, and so some of them, you know, we got full bids that had all this extra work in it, whereas a lot of it, we will kind of peel it back and try to save some money and pay for what we've already accomplished. Right, and then we will share some of the, who was that, actually?
It's like my first year, so it was like. It's like my first year, so it was like, I would say like twenty sixteen, something like that, a while ago.
Okay.
Twenty sixteen, twenty seven, twenty seventeen, maybe.
Yeah, it was the first year of CIP, okay.
Correct.
Okay, great, so, um, so anyway, so if everybody's good with that, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, I'm just under pressure.
Thank you.
So we had humidity. Uh, next item is twelve, discussion, discussion of recommended changes from the Connecticut to the Boston Post Road crosswalk sidewalk project. So Rob is on here, I guess he's, wait, are you in your office here?
I am, I am, I just like to, I like to be able to present two exhibits when explaining this, so that's why I'm here.
Oh, so you can share them?
Yeah. Yep, so, um.
The document was pretty big. Right?
Can everyone hear me, I think, hopefully?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, basically about a month ago, I gave an update, uh, to the board regarding all the, uh, the engineering projects, uh, we have going on. One of those projects in particular was a, a crosswalk, um, and pedestrian improvement project. This, this project, obviously, just to give a very brief recap, was, you know, spearheaded, um, by the local traffic authority and chief of police putting in, uh, silo, um, crosswalks at a few locations in town. At the, you know, it was requested by, uh, you know, citizens and we had, had, had a study completed about whether we, we can or should we put, uh, crosswalks at these locations. John had, had picked it up from there and hired SLR, um, to start, uh, designing, you know, said crosswalks at, at three locations. Since that time, since I've, I've gotten involved, I wanted to, I, I saw an opportunity to add some even more, some additional pedestrian accessibility, and integration with this project. So I'm going to show an exhibit real quick to show, um, you know, what we have on the contract thus far and kind of what we're looking to, use additional funding to achieve, so if you.
Yes, just a reminder, we, um, this board voted on applying for lots of funds for this project, you know, and we kind of pieced together a couple of different sidewalk projects and crosswalk projects, so we began off to get lots of funding. So we went ahead and submitted all that, and that includes the West Wharf sidewalk and then crosswalks across Route One at different places. We submitted it and then all of a sudden the state liked it a lot and said, hey, why don't you do this too as part of the Lots of application? And they, they will fund it all, but we have to pay for the, uh, design, basically. And it, it kind of dovetails with what we had wanted to do in first place, which is connecting downtown to circle. Oh, um, so it's including Route One. Um, so this was going to be the next phase, but now the state is saying, if you just tag this onto this project, and they came up with a recommended route, which is what, um, he's trying to show there. Can you zoom in a little bit more on that? So that's West Wharf right there, right?
Yep, so basically, um, just like Peggy just said, the, the state, at that point of our last, at our last meeting, we were waiting on the commitment to fund letter from the state. Um, and to reiterate, you know, they didn't have any significant comments regarding what we were doing. In fact, they did exactly what Peggy just mentioned, they encouraged us to put more sidewalk in. So we, we have money in the CIP to cover most of it. But there is a bit of an overage, which is why we'll be requesting some additional funding. But just to give a brief overview of what we have, uh, currently under contract and what, where we're going, this is a graphic I briefly put together for our engineer, but I figured I'll show it here, so basically, under contract, we have right now from West Wharf going north, um, up to the intersection of Boston Post Road and Lantern Hill. This is the crosswalk that goes a, across, and it is a small section here with crosswalks on, um, going parallel to Boston Post Road. So that's what's currently in design and was sent to the Lotsip program, uh, originally. Now, the, uh, the DOT, their recommendation is they would, they'd be willing to include in our Lotsip application, additional sidewalk going west here in red, um, let me zoom in a little bit here. West going red to these two bus stop locations to improve interconnectivity with, uh, you know, a transit slash pedestrian interconnection. As well as they proposed, they suggested us, um, providing sidewalk going east, um, along Boston Post Road for a section and then splitting off onto Britton Lane, ultimately leading us to another crosswalk, we, uh, we would install this crosswalk here. And when we discussed this internally, this essentially, we're ahead of schedule here, this was in our five-year plan, uh, to create the downtown center to surf club interconnection, which again, I think everyone can agree is a, is an interconnection that needs to happen. You know, there's so many pedestrians that use this, kids use it, especially in the summertime now. So by providing this section that DOT is recommending, this essentially gets us to this point, and if you follow my dashed orange line here, that's, that pretty much, that gets us to downtown, because you have safe pedestrian access through the town green. You can either, you know, pick a side which way you go, but if you follow along Memorial Town Hall here, um, across Academy to pass the new Guilford Savings Bank and then, not to tout, John and I's recently constructed, uh, Durham Road project, but now you have the ability to also go north and head that way, or you could do what we're trying to achieve, yeah, which is head to, to access downtown. So basically, in summary with this graphic, the orange is what is existing, the red is what we're looking to fund now with this additional money, and the black is what is currently under contract. Uh, the dashed blue line here with our master plan and some funding opportunities through the SCROG, there's the possibility in the future of possibly a demo project, um, on Surf Club Road. So this is graphic number one, if you just hang with me one sec, there's another graphic I'd like to get to. Ninety, eighty-nine. Okay, so can everyone see the different graphic I've put up here?
Yep.
Okay, so similar to the, uh, the previous exhibit, the black is currently what we have on the contract. So as part of the same sort of, uh, you know, the iterations of this project, it's just, the scope is just in, a, ever-expanding, which is a great thing for the, especially these locations where we're proposing sidewalk. Currently on the contract, we have from the Hammond Asset sort of auxiliary lot here, Showline Greenway Trail, ADA accessible route along Boston Post Road to Dudley Lane, and then there's another, uh, crossing here at Boston Post Road. And you can access Lenny and Joe's, or you could go across Dudley Lane here and ultimately access Dunkin' Donuts. Similarly, on the south side, you could cross Dudley Lane and then there's, uh, Donahue's Restaurant here. Just like with the other application, the DOT, again, not only do they like what we're proposing, but they're, they're also encouraging us to install more sidewalk. So, um, right now, we have the ability here, I have this little window, let me get rid of my little window here. Okay, we have the ability now to, on the north and south side, you know, there's plenty of bit between Donahue's, we have the gas station, we have, um, the, I forget the name of it now. Yeah, just changed, recently changed ownership. We, uh, so we, now we can connect not only Hammond Asset, we can connect these businesses in this corridor here, uh, two bus stops is what the DOT is really trying to hammer home. Provide access to another one of our great, uh, field facilities here in town, Salt Meadow Park. So it'll provide access there and continuing eastbound to, and this was a crosswalk that we originally had designed, uh, you know, or John and the chief, when they, we had worked on looking at these crosswalks. This was the third location, but we had omitted it from the previous application, because the DOT, we felt that, and if in consultation from the SCROG, they, they wouldn't have accepted this as a location due to no means of ingress and egress to this crosswalk, it would have just been a crosswalk to nowhere. But now that we have this opportunity to add sidewalk to it, we could, you know, head east here, go north across the crosswalk, and now you'll be able to interconnect Cottage Road as well as all the businesses that you all know and love in this area here between my personal favorite, because that's, I'm a Madison Youth Lacrosse member, but there's Madison Youth Lacrosse Unlimited. You have Cohen's Bagels, you have all these businesses in here that will be able to provide pedestrian accessibility to. You have the Hammond Asset Package Store, uh, the new veterinary facility here, as well as Dunkin' Donuts from this side. So this is a, an, a corridor in town that has high commercial, um, has a high commercial, uh, base in this part of town that we can provide not just interconnection to, to all those buildings, but also one of our largest parks in town, as well as Hammond Acid Park, State Park. So.
Or, well, it's just to note, there's a lot of housing on Cottage Road, including, uh, Longington Madison, as well as Windermere.
Yeah.
Um, and a lot of walkers, I know, from Windermere.
And, and new condos going up too.
Pardon?
New condos.
And new condos going up also, um.
With the ones right next to, come.
So I think, I think this is, what we'd be proving now is the planning reserve money to fund, um, the, uh, design, right? And then there would be a final design to present to the public, and then we, I guess we have to amend our Lots of application, correct? And then, um, and then go back to the state with the new design, and then they will pay for all the construction, so. So that, I think it's a win-win, right?
I think that's great, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a great area of town too, it's up, uh, uh, to have all those sidewalks, because I see people walking all the time, it's not very safe.
Rob, does it end by the, the Ice House? Like, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it'll stop right before that, so basically, uh, hang on one sec. Share. Yeah, it would basically end right before the Ice House there, before you're crossing the cut, I have it cut off here, but basically.
Right there at the corner?
Yeah, this is like the west side of Cottage Road on, on the south side. So, yeah, that's effectively where it would end, but yeah, again, this is a nice amount, I, I think per the proposal that we received, it's a little over, between both locations, both exhibits that I showed you, it's over a mile of sidewalk.
So. And I think the downtown connection is, is less intrusive, I guess is what they determined.
Yeah, like how they took it through the, the green like that, you know, especially with kids, getting them a little bit further away from the road as they're doing.
Yeah.
Especially the busiest parts, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. And so we, once the design is done, we would do public hearings, so any, any, uh, property owners would be able to see the design and everything in the way in, but, uh, this helps us get the design completed.
Yeah, it seems like you're, you individual property owners are, uh, you know, residential property owners, I should say.
I think there's just the four on Boston Post Road that are affected, um, and that's it.
Yeah.
Say, Rob, before we start sharing this document with others, uh, there seems to be, um, a truncated description here. The pages aren't numbered, but under project information and the, the second point, there's a description of, uh, the purpose and need of the project, and it's a, it's a very meaty paragraph, but it suddenly ends, it's truncated, and there's a, there's some things missing that I think the.
Which, which document are you looking at?
It was in our packet.
In the packet, I'm looking at project information, and the second point includes a, uh, a, a narrative of, of where the sidewalks are going to be added, but the narrative suddenly stops in mid-sentence.
Oh, I think.
Yeah, and I, I think it's, it's, um, a meaningful part of this proposal is, uh, probably.
I didn't, I actually, I actually didn't provide that, so I'm not, I'm not sure where that came from.
I'll talk to you after the meeting.
It's your real application, and it's like you fill it out online and you can't print it out.
It's not.
That's probably no license.
Yeah, because they have all the lots, so that's all you can say. And I, I asked her to put the original Lotsip, so just to remind you of what the original project was and, you know, that this was basically adding on the project, so.
I, yeah, I could send you the digital file, because that's exactly what it is, is when they receive these applications, they receive them digitally, so they have the ability to scroll, so if anyone in the public or yourself would like to review the application, I could certainly provide that. But again, we are in the process of revising it to reflect, uh, will hopefully reflect, um, this additional sidewalk.
Thank you, Rob, but do you have any idea in the timeline for all of this?
Yeah, so hopefully, uh, right now, I, I didn't want to waste any time, so with the hope that the, the, the additional twenty-four thousand would be approved, SLR this week is revising the Lotsip application, um, to reflect these changes. And then my hope is on July seventh, the, the next Board of Selectment meeting, we could get the contract amendment awarded, um, to them, and they could begin work on, uh, now they could, you know, work on, uh, work on it holistically as an entire project. And my hope is that, you know, we could, they could work through this, uh, throughout the fall and winter, and we could get this out to bid and ready to go for, um, either March or April of twenty twenty-six.
Wow.
That's great, that's awesome, that's great, Rob.
Yeah.
All right, well, good, uh, we'll just forward this, go to the final, so. Um, I guess with that, then, item number thirteen is just the additional funds that would be needed to finish the design. Discuss and take action to approve leasing function of the planning reserve in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars to fund additional design plans with the Boston Post Road Crosswalk Sidewalk Project pending court of finance approval. So.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, great, thank you, it's good to hear.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you.
All right, item number fourteen, discuss and take action to request from the Public Works Department to extend funds for the removal of brush logs from the town's disposal facility in the amount of twenty-five thousand four hundred and to award a contract to the Good Earth Tree and to authorize the first select one to sign a contract and documents associated with this award budgeted in the fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, budget, companies on the state contract, uh, bid list, so.
So move.
Okay, okay, and I know John's here, but this is just basically the cleanup we do every year, right?
Standard, standard issue.
Yes.
And actually, that's a smaller, usually this is a bigger contract, it's not like a.
It's, we've been getting a good price.
Yeah, and it's great.
Last few years.
Um, could I just ask, just for my own clarification, why do we have to have it removed as opposed to like, say, burning it?
They, we, we stopped burning years ago, I'm not sure, honestly, I don't know why, whether it's environmental.
I think it's not permitted to do that.
I, I think it's not, not allowed.
Yeah, okay.
You know.
Cause you probably have to have a certain facility set up, you have a firm.
Yeah, because it's just smoke, it's, I mean, that, that would be a lot of.
Yeah, and it was smoke, a lot of smoke, I think.
Uh, I mean, you can get burn permits for certain things, but I don't think you can just have, that's part of your regular.
I wasn't sure, because I know, I remember like, I don't know, a couple of months ago, people could see a bunch of smoke from, I think ninety-five, and I was like, what's going on? And it was a Connecticut-based facility that was doing like a big brush burn.
Like a troll burn.
Yeah, or it was, you're getting rid of brush, so I didn't, I didn't know, so I just wanted to find out.
I mean, it might be, it's been, it's been a long time, yeah.
Since I've been in this role, we have not, a lot of burned down, and.
He would, he would know. Yeah, what's, what's allowed and then deep, I would guess, there's got to be some restrictions on that, but, uh, so this always gets to, and I didn't say, this has been a bigger number some years, we have a lot of storms and everything, and it's going to be a really big number too, so. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye, but fair enough, and maybe, maybe talk to Sam and find out, and see what new deals on that. Um, item number fifteen, discuss and take action to approve a request for the purchase of Bandit Woodchipper and all related equipment in an amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars as approved in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six capital improvement program highway equipment reserve, award a contract between the town of Madison and RPS Supply, authorize first select one to sign all the street contracts and documents contract honor after July first, twenty twenty-five, contracted through the source of purchasing consortium. Okay, okay, any further questions on that? This is the new equipment piece, right? So, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, discuss and take action to approve a bid waiver request for the purchase of a twenty twenty-six Ford F three fifty and all related equipment not to exceed sixty-two thousand thirty dollars as approved in the, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six capital improvement program highway equipment reserve to award a contract between the town of Madison and Montana's Ford to authorize first select one to sign all the street contracts and documents honor after July first, twenty twenty-five.
So move.
Okay. Just so I, because we, I did get a chance to review this with you, is this where we just got to grab one of these, because we can't get one, is that why we're? We need to start the process. Yeah. And then be ready to go July first. But I'm just saying, we've actually gotten a price locked in.
Yep.
Okay, I just.
I'm just curious, because I don't know, is that a fair price, or are we getting a good price?
Yeah, and it sounds like we're doing a big waiver.
So it has to.
Oh, it's below state bit, yeah, okay. And it was amazing how.
That's very good. For steering wheel?
No.
That breaks.
I was telling my son today in the car how it used to not be standard. I was telling my son today in the car how it used to not be standard, it's going up.
Or a radio, yeah.
Power windows.
Or power windows.
Air conditioning.
Yeah.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, item number seventeen, discuss and take action to approve.
There's gonna, there's a lot of big paragraphs.
To approve a bid waiver request for the purchase of a, uh, twenty twenty-six Ford F- five fifty, and all related equipment in the amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand seventy-five dollars as approved in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Capital Improvement Program Highway Equipment Reserve, award a contract between the town of Madison and Motown's Ford to authorize first select one to sign all the certain contracts and documents, honor after July first, twenty twenty-five.
So move.
Second, okay, where is Motown's Ford? Hamilton, okay, it's a Connecticut.
We have, yes, it's Connecticut.
Definitely Connecticut, it's okay.
And this one, the good, great father from that.
Yeah, yeah.
Many times, yes.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Yes.
They need a fight.
They do? Well, we didn't get them, I remember three years ago, we couldn't even get any vehicles. Uh, item eighteen, uh, discuss and take action to approve request for the purchase of three twenty twenty-five Ford Interceptor police vehicles, all related equipment in an amount not to exceed hundred ninety-five thousand hundred fifty dollars as approved in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Capital Improvement Program Police Vehicle Placement Reserve, and to award a contract between the town of Madison and McGovern Municipal HQ, and to authorize first select one to sign all the certain contracts and documents, honor after July first, twenty twenty-five. Vehicle purchases.
So move.
Second, okay, any further questions on that? That's just part of, uh, placing plan.
That's your last thing, there.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, so item number nineteen, um, I'm actually going to amend, uh, the motion on nineteen and add a B to it, because it turns out we're going to have to add, we're going to have to send the appropriation we did for the Green Hill Softball replacement project that has to go to town meeting. It's a long discussion, but it's hard to figure out where, what departments, because our charter refers to departments, you know, and then they accumulate to a certain dollar value, is it one fifty or two fifty? If we hit each department, if a department has two fifty for special appropriation, it has anything over that, it's going to town meeting. Some of these projects, yeah, they cross the line, and they're all.
We have general budgeted funds versus the CIP project, so we do need to clarify that.
Because we, so emergency management, we did under facilities, right? Which really shouldn't have been under facilities, but now it's kicked this one, and this one really should be correct.
Joe's here.
So if we were kind of talking about.
It's all this one, yeah.
We were kind of talking about, you know, how we, yeah, so we're going to kind of figure this out, I think, and have a little form, formal policy around this. So we just said, you know what, we already did it through facilities, that's how our board approved it, so we're going to keep it going forward, and it's going to have to go on the town meeting call. So, awesome. So with that, I will read an amended motion to discuss and take action to call a special town meeting on Wednesday, July ninth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM at Pulson Auditorium, three oh two Green Hill Road, for the following purpose, pending board of finance approval. A, to approve a special appropriation amount not to exceed two million six hundred two thousand nine hundred dollars for the undesigned fund balance for the Madison Host Company Firehouse Expansion slash UFC project, and B, to approve a special appropriation amount not to exceed two hundred twenty-eight thousand two hundred dollars for the Green Hill Softball Turf replacement project.
So move.
Second. Okay, so we're just adding this to the call, this is the town, uh, you know, what we talked about in the last. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and let's hope it's not this hot, because, we have struggled to find something big.
We had a lot of construction done.
Yeah, so, and to have something, so the high school's out of commission, because they're working on their air conditioning. Um, Brown is out of commission, because they're working on stuff, so, um, so Pulson is the only option. And I will really appreciate it when we get air conditioning in the summer of twenty twenty-six in the auditorium, so. Um, alright, with, moving on, then I guess that's, uh, wrapping up to item number twenty. Um, are there any citizens comments? There's no citizens in the room, but are there any hands raised online?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Fran.
Hi, I, um, I did get home really quickly. Um, I, I did, I did mean that, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, particularly the gardening club, but I encourage all members of the board when they get a free chance to go to Bauer Park and look at the magnificent pavilion that was built, thanks to your support and to the dedication of the gardening club, and, uh, with Austin not there, his, his help as well. So it's, it's beautiful, it's got movable benches though, so we're, we're going to be changing those to, so that they're locked down, so just tying together Bauer Park and benches a little bit, but, uh, it's really a nice little spot, you should see it.
Awesome, thanks, Ray.
Great, thank you. I did, I did really say it's completed, so, um, the other hands raised, then here are no objections, this is a jerk, right?